At the meeting, it's Tuesday, September 27th of 2022. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting, and we'll start out with the roll call.
Raff. Kylie.
I'm here.
Here.
Oh, there's. Gotcha. Thank you. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Mayaski. I see him. Mayaski? Moving on, Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Tumacher.
Here.
Vanegas.
Here.
Zakowski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
I have 11 Alders present. I did see Alder Mayaski signed in. Oh. Markham is here.
All right. Thank you very much. Minutes and reports are in the packet. For public comment period, we did have one person signed up, but he also has an agenda item. I think he's going to wait to speak when we get to that point. So that would take us to communications and presentations. Are there any communications from Alders tonight? Hearing none. I have one. The Department of Transportation is going to have a public information meeting on October 4th at 5 o'clock at the fire station. And this would be in regards to the Highway 51 corridor project that will be occurring starting in a couple of years. They're doing some planning and they would like some public input on some proposed ideas they have for Main Street. So if you're available on October 4th at 5 o'clock at the fire station, the DOT would love to see you there. Can do that. You want to do that? Okay. So the other communication which is on the agenda is a couple of years ago, we did a resolution, the council did, that was passed declaring the second Monday of October as Innuis People Day in Stoughton. So we wanted to recognize that tonight. And are there any communications from Alders? Hearing none. We'll move in to our order of business. The first item is the consent agenda. It looks like we have some minutes in there from the last city council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minute. The vote.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, a second by Reeves for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Under old business, we have a guest tonight, Attorney Derek Punches is here. And he's going to walk us through the R 184 resolution before we get into the actual resolution. This is a follow-up to a discussion that occurred at the last meeting. And then we'll just kind of go from there. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about what the city's authority was to approve or deny a cigarette and tobacco product retail license. I believe this was on the internet tonight. And there are a couple of different ways to think about this. The first is what sort of authority does the city have ordinances? And the second question is, and that response would dictate how you would reach this license currently up in consideration. The second question, I think, is what is the authority under state law? What could you adopt to regulate this process going forward? Those are two just questions. Number one, statute divides up the authority into sort of three broad buckets. One is sort of retail licensure for cigarette and tobacco products. Number two is the sale to minors. And number three is taxation. There is a question about to what extent the municipality can create a regulation that's sort of different from what's in state. In the packet, there's the actual retail license. It's on a form provided by the Department of Revenue and includes a number of check boxes about what sort of things the applicant has to comply with. By and large, these are the only requirements that city, under current law, under both your code and state statute can regulate. As long as the applicant checks the box, the city shall issue. More broadly speaking, in looking at what other types of regulations, whether it's regulations placed on the sort of the conditions of the license or in sort of the manner that's going to be actually taking place. There is at least one major case, this is a US Oil versus City of Fond du Lac case, where City of Fond du Lac wanted to regulate the sale of single carton cigarettes. And they said that it has to basically pass through the proprietor. It can't be on a shelf somewhere. You actually have to purchase it from sort of behind the counter. And US Oil, who sort of operates through a gas station, they challenged the regulation. Two things. One, the statute talks about any ordinance in this sphere needing to be in strict conformity with state statute. Number two, in several places in the statute, they talk about the legislature has declared that this is a matter of statewide concern and thus the legislature has sort of moved. And this is kind of the point that we find ourselves now. I would say that five, six years ago, there's a question about even whether the municipality could not renew or decide not to issue based off of certain characteristics, right? If a person was failed to follow the law with respect to either what was adopted in your ordinances or adopted in state statute, could the municipality decide not to renew that license? And I think that was an open question. However, in 2015, a group of legislators got together and said, statute's not clear. We want to put something in place that gives municipalities that authority. Well, somewhere along the line, that got pared back. Now, what's in statute only allows, this is 2015, Act 275, what's in statute now only allows first-class cities, so which is the point? To spend, not renew, or not issue a license. And sort of lumped it into that strict conformity. So now, if it was sort of unclear before, it is now far more clear to say that legislature has acted and said, only first-class cities, the city's law. So sort of leaving open, sort of closing the door on this question. A different question has come up as well about status, and we can talk about this, but the status of vapor product regulation, sort of e-cigarettes and other sort of vapor products. This is something that's a little bit more new. And the way that the legislature has dealt with it is not quite the same as they have with tobacco and cigarette licensure. And that, again, leaves a door open for the question, at least, about whether or not the municipality can regulate that. And we can certainly talk about that more, but I want to first entertain questions on the tobacco retailer side.
Are there any questions from council members at this point?
So in summary, what you're saying is unless you live in Milwaukee, we can't regulate any tobacco product.
And that language specifically refers to the sort of suspension or non-renewal of license. And even that is fairly limited. And the statute provides a couple of criteria that the city can look at. But as long as the applicant checks the boxes and otherwise complies with the law, it's a shall issue license under Chapter 134. And there's not a lot of opportunity to regulate outside of the sphere, even if you wanted. Both of what's with respect to this license that's before you, there's nothing, there's no sort of conditions or other prerequisites that you could place on that. More broadly speaking, there is very limited opportunity outside of exactly what's in the statute that you could adopt in an ordinance anyways.
Why does it come to council?
That is a great question. State statute allows you to place a fee anywhere between $500 and most, I think most places have established at the high end of $100. But otherwise, the legislature has stepped in this field and said, we're going to regulate. And the municipality places their role is to sort of approve these licenses. Why it comes to council is, that's the question. That's the way the ordinance has it set up. I believe that you could set it up such a way that clerk could issue these as well. But that's something that I would want to look for, look a little bit more deep.
Other person, Hunt?
In your research, did you see anything pertaining to the proximity to school property? A distance, a minimum distance?
As far as the sale of the products?
The location of the?
Not that I'm aware of, no. No. And setting aside the question of the use of products is maybe a different question, but here we're only talking about sort of sale and distribution of tobacco products, right? And as far as I'm aware, there are no, state statute at least doesn't regulate if it can be X number of feet.
Have any class, 2 through 4 cities filed any sort of litigation to challenge that? Just that Class 1 city ruling?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not offering to do that, are you?
No, no.
It's a finance fair. Any other questions from council members?
No, and I guess when we were thinking about this, when we talked earlier this week, it says how many stores actually do sell cigarettes and vaping in Stoughton that I don't think we were all aware of. I mean, this is just similar to when there was another bar that was trying to be open, another liquor store. There was a council member that really wanted to decrease the amount and everything. And I think we're just trying to make sure that, you know, doing our due diligence is, you know, is this how many liquor stores, how many cigarette stores, how many access to things we want our children to have access to. It doesn't seem like we, our hands are tied, so can't really do much about it.
Yeah, we're not going to be legalizing tobacco regardless of any of our personal feelings about it for the city. Any other?
This is.
Go ahead, Matt.
Just to make clear, I think Derek still has a few more things to say about vaping once you're done with discussing tobacco specifically.
Okay. Any more discussion on the tobacco portion of it before we pivot to the next? Okay, go ahead if you want to lead into that, Derek.
Great. And that's a great, great point. And recall where we started. We talked about the three big buckets. That's the retail licensure, the taxation, and the sales to minors. And the sort of what the statute calls vapor products, e-cigarettes. The legislature only sort of recently stepped into this arena. And when they did, they inserted language into two of those buckets, talking about sales to minors, right? We still don't want them to go to, we still don't want those products sold to anybody under the age of 18 under state statute. And it's also subject to taxation at the state level. What they didn't do was place anything in the retail licensure component. And so this presents a sticky situation, to say the least, because it puts the municipality in a position to have to determine whether or not, in the same way that the legislature has spoken with regard to tobacco and cigarette retail licensure, did the state develop a sort of comprehensive scheme in the same way it did tobacco and cigarette licensure? Or did it sort of leave open the door for municipalities to regulate as far as the retail licensure of these types of products? And we've seen some analysis and from others about coming down on both sides of this state. And it would be it would certainly leave the door open to challenge if the city wanted to step in and create an ordinance that would regulate retail license. It's not clear until either the legislature acts further or a municipality brings, you know, introduces a resolution, I'm sorry, an ordinance, and it's actually challenged for us to actually know what's going to occur sort of in this space. And so I don't know if we would be comfortable coming down one way or another, saying that we feel very strongly that you could or could not do this, but essentially, it's an open question at this.
Any questions on this part?
So theoretically, and I'm just throwing it out there, you know, if we wanted to regulate, we could take the stance of like how the state gives us X number of bar licenses per year or per municipality. And then if another business wants a license and we've exceeded our limit, they would have to pay X amount like that, $10,000. If we wanted to, that would be something that we could do. We could say the city is only going to issue X number of licenses for vaping. And then, you know, say if another business comes in and wants to sell, but all the licenses are used, they would, you know, we'd get a different price. I'm just throwing this out there as an example, just so I understand what's going on, not that I'm actually proposing to do this. Is that what you're saying?
That's a good question. It's that there's the opportunity that a city could step in and regulate in such a manner. But it's unclear whether or not that would be upheld in court. If somebody challenged it, say that the municipality does not have the authority under state law, under this US Oil case that we talked about earlier, by extension, the question is, has the legislature sort of preempted local control over this issue in the same way that it has over sort of tobacco and cigarette products? And if the answer is yes, then that would be, your ordinance would be struck down. If the answer is no, and the legislature has left the door open, it's something that you could do. You could structure it in a number of different ways, I would think. That's something that we would want to look further into. But again, until we see further direction from either court or from the legislature, it, we're a little bit on shaky ground as far as what you can and cannot do in this space.
If we wanted to be the municipality to test it out, God forbid, that's, we would see how far it goes.
And to follow up on that, in this particular application, it wouldn't apply anyway, right? Because he applied under the current ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to get rid of.
He's going to be fine. But going forward, if that's something that you wanted us to do, then we would probably shift that to public safety and they would potentially draft an ordinance. But you don't have to decide that tonight. But that could be an option. Is there anything else that you wanted to cover tonight before we get into the resolution?
I think that covers in broad strokes unless the council has any other questions.
No, thank you for all your research and explanation in getting this to. It's just always nice to know where, what we can and cannot control in our municipality, and it seems like not much.
True. Well, and this question has come up before, not specifically on this, just any business, has come up on restaurants. Oh, do we really need another one of them? Or do we need another quick trip, for example, always comes up? And I don't know if that falls under the same type of regulation or if this one's specific to basically tobacco.
Right. And I would say this is fairly specific to the sort of cigarette, tobacco, nicotine products regulation because it is so heavily regulated at the state level.
Right.
And there's sort of a complicated sort of preemption analysis too that a court might go through to say that, you know, are these, could these regulations sort of coexist side by side? Is this something that, as long as they're not in conflict, can they coexist? What's different about the cigarette and tobacco products is that there is press language in the statute that says both this is a matter of statewide concern, that the legislature is acting on this issue, and two, that any ordinance has to be in strict conformity. And read very broadly, that sort of restricts all local action on any matters related, at least to tobacco regulation.
All right. Thank you. Without any other questions, we do have a resolution for consideration that came from the Public Safety Committee, R 184 2022. Other person, Jensen, did you want to introduce it?
Thank you. Authorizing and directing proper city officials, excuse me. Resolution 184 2022, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a cigarette and tobacco products retail license to E N R Investments, Inc., doing business as Vapes and Cigars Number 3, located at 1312 Hamilton Street, Suite 200. Public Safety recommends approval on a 4-0 vote.
Okay, that's the motion, and a second by President Hirsch. Anything else we need to cover from the committee side of it?
No. I'm glad we had this discussion, though. I think it's something that, you know, it's a public safety issue.
Okay.
And we needed to know this information and so we can make some changes if necessary or go forward.
All right. And I want to thank the applicant for your patience and for being here tonight. And the applicant is here if anybody has any questions. I think it was pretty well summarized in the letter that was in your packet, and there's hard copies here as well. Do you want to speak? Okay.
Thank you for having me over here. And I do appreciate, you know, you guys going through it. I want to introduce myself, Mohammed. You know, I have been in business for 25 years. We, you know, do more business, more safety for our kids. You know, I've been in different communities. I have four kids. We have all our products behind the counter. And the state says I can sell it to 18, but my policy is 21. We do not sell anything, and if they're not 21, they're not even allowed in the store. We would let them know if you're accompanied by an adult, yes. But if they're coming in and my clerk or my employee sees it, they'll ask for ID. Make sure they're 21. If they're not, we'll let them know that you don't belong in the store because I have nothing to sell for them. So I, you know, I want to protect the community. I want to protect my business, you know, because I'm doing business in my community, you know, where I, and it's for adult smokers to fulfill their needs, you know? So I'm assuring you that I have good ethics, you know? I have a person who will watch for me, who knows me for 20 years, you know, that I've been in business. So and then plus I bought the building too, just to make sure, you know, we got new businesses coming in in the old Klinky Building. I purchased it six months ago and trying to get everything cleaned up, renovated. I got a boutique store coming into that place. And I'm hoping a financial advisor come in so get that place cleaned up and bring some new business in town.
All right. President Hirsch?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mohammed, and thank you for your explanation and bringing businesses to Stoughton. I just want to let you know that it wasn't your application that flagged this. It was just, you know, the concern over a couple of years ago where vaping was such a crisis in our, in our community and all the communities throughout the United States, that that's what kind of triggered it. It had nothing to do with your application. Was this, I think we all were amazed at how many vape stores and vape products were in the city. So, you know, your application just triggered a response. It had nothing to do with your application or your business or anything like that. So, and I'm sorry that you were just kind of, you were just the lucky winner of us, you know, realizing what was going on, so.
This is not my first. I mean, I have several other businesses. You know, sometime I have to go get for extra parking, a building permit. I mean, I have some hotels, some strip malls, some other issues too. So this is not my first rodeo in the front of the city council.
Well, thank you again for showing up and, you know, writing a letter and all that.
Thanks to Phil, because otherwise I would have been sitting in front of the city hall. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion does carry. Next item is Ordinance 19 2022. This one is, looks like the next several ones are coming from Public Safety for second readings. Other person, Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Ordinance 19 of 2022, amending Chapter 70-221 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code by adding Section 145 relating to stopping restrictions on Velcoman Way at Nygaard Street. And I'd move for approval.
Second by other person, Tumacher. Other person, Jensen?
Yep. It's pretty self-explanatory to look into, put some stop signs up, help with the public safety. And Keith is here if you have any questions. This was something that came through his office.
All right. Keith or Director Shiel, do you want to comment on this one?
Sure. I can let you know that Velcoman Way and Nygaard Street just opened the traffic this week, Monday. So it really is appropriate to have the stop sign placed at Nygaard Street on Velcoman at Nygaard, intend Nygaard to be a straight through. It's a T condition, so one stop sign on Velcoman Way will prevent or minimize the chance for collisions there.
All right. Anything from your end? Okay. Any questions or comments on this one?
I have a really quick.
Yep, go ahead.
So then where Velcoman Way goes, it had been opened after not having been open. Is that then going to close for good? That the plan?
Yeah, the backside of Eggleson's Woods, Barberry Road is to be reclosed after the construction's complete. I believe that barricade is scheduled to be placed in the next week or so, if it's not already barricaded off. But that will be not a through route any longer again.
All right. Are there any other questions? So Rodney, can you kind of describe, I think this is the intersection, isn't it?
The intersection you're showing there is actually the new Greenbrier Drive where it intersects with 51 opposite of Rotten Dun Town Line Road.
Yeah. So Velcom is going to be shut off at Nygaard, which is just below this picture, right?
Yeah. So for, you might recall the area that's, we're, later on the agenda, we're looking to vacate Velcoman Way in the segment between Nygaard and 51. That's already been removed. But the backside of the Eggleson's Woods, the rural subdivision, we have an agreement with the town of Dunkirk that helps to solidify the barricade on the east side of that development so it's not a cut through the rural subdivision out to the new development.
Any questions on the stop sign? Did I answer your question, Frank?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Here are no others. All in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next one, Ordinance 20, other person, Jensen?
It's a second reading, Ordinance 20 2022, adopting Chapter 70-221, City of Stoughton Municipal Code by adding subsection 146 relating to stopping restrictions on Greenbrier and US 51, and I'd recommend approval.
Second.
Second by other person, Reeves. Other person, Jensen?
Again, self-explanatory. I don't know if there are any questions. Keith's here. Rodney's here.
Yeah. Anything you want to add on this one, Rodney?
Maybe I can just inform the group that this connection to 51 is not yet open to the public. Obviously, it's appropriate to have this stop sign placed and, and in effect, before the street opens. But there is some of the turn lane activity that yet needs to be completed before that intersection with 51 will be open to traffic.
All right. Anything for me? Okay. Go ahead.
A question, because this is a new entrance into 51, is there anything that we can do to kind of like alert people on 51 that people might be entering? This, I just, 51 is notorious for people getting, you know, cars colliding. just, fifty-one is notorious for people getting, you know, cars colliding, is there any for at least initially having any flashing lights or anything to like warn, let people know that there's a new stop sign here and people are entering? I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything that you guys are concerned about or that you think it's okay, I mean, I just would hate to somebody first car that goes out there gets, you know, hit because people aren't paying attention because I've never seen a street there before.
Well, hopefully, for the routine people that drive through the corridor, there, there's been a lot of construction activity out here, obviously, but particularly, this has been a visible location for drivers to see recent barricades and lane closures and the addition of the turn lane and acceleration lane being added to fifty-one. I'm hopeful that at least the, um, local traffic people recognize that. I, I guess I'm a little more concerned about people that aren't familiar with the area, um, and then there isn't really a duration of time that we could try to inform them going forward. We have a flasher board that maybe we can put up some type of, um, message before, before it opens up, but we could talk about that internally and see if there might be some language that would be appropriate for placement of that message board at the time it opens up.
That'd be great, just because I know we, you know, worked on getting the speed limit dropped and all that, but I think just anything we can do, I just, I mean, this weekend, again, there was another bad accident on fifty-one, I just, anything that we can do to reduce people colliding would be greatly appreciated.
If I can just segue into that a moment, there was a, a statement about reducing the speed limit. You'll recall the city made a request about a year ago to reduce the speed limit through this corridor up to race, or at least to Rutland Don Town Line Road. Um, it doesn't sound like the, the D O T is going to grant that request or re-sign it. However, um, as you know, the city takes over control of fifty-one up and past the Robie, Robie Road Roundabout at the time that project's completed, so we'll be presenting, um, the speed limit reduction request to the Public Safety Committee for that segment of fifty-one up to and just past the Robie Road intersection. That doesn't, doesn't accomplish anything here at, yeah, Rutland Don Town Line Road, opposite of Greenbrier, but nonetheless, it would, would slow traffic down farther out on fifty-one than we have in the past. Um, in, in addition, um, we did have the opportunity with that resolution, making that request, they did design the improvements based on a thirty-five mile an hour posted speed limit, and will be doing so in the design of the corridor up to County Trunk Highway B as that design progresses as well. So, I, I think there was a positive in the resolution that we presented, um, you know, I think there's some, we'll be disappointed that we can't get the speed limit reduced sooner, um, but we can accomplish it with, with the area that's under our control in the near future.
Thank you, Rodney, and thank you for the update, I didn't realize that they were going to reject our request.
We, we haven't seen the official, um, statement to that effect, and we've been urging and continuing to request their position on that, and we hear those, it should be coming forth, forthcoming soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, next one is ordinance twenty-one, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, amending chapter seventy dash two twenty-one, City of Stoughton Municipal Code by adding subsection one forty-seven relating to stopping restrictions on both sides of Isham Street at South Page Street. I'd remove for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Reeves, Alder Person Jensen.
Uh, yeah, this is, um, Isham, way on the end of South Page Street, um, new construction in there, and again, we're trying to get the stop signs in place before the roads open up.
All right, anything you want to add, uh, Director Shiel?
I don't, I don't have anything to add at this time, other than to indicate that the west end of Isham Street is likely to be completed, um, prior to snow falling this year.
Absolutely. Anything from you, Chief? No, I want to thank you for the pictures. Um, these are taken from the drone that the council approved not too long ago. Oh, I didn't share it?
Yeah.
Isn't it, yeah. Sorry, didn't mean to be selfish for you out in the Zoom world, there's a picture of this one. All right, um, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll see if I can put the next picture up. Ordinance twenty-two, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, ordinance twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, amending section seventy dash one thirty-five, reserved EMS and city staff parking, and I would move for approval.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher, Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, you can see by the, uh, photograph, the picture up there, the yellow lines that are marking off where the, uh, restrictions would be, and, uh, it would be for, I guess... Yeah, go ahead.
I was giving you five, I thought you were looking for a number.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, there are, there's five, um, but I'm not sure, uh, Chief, on the side where it's next to the, the old garage there, um, and the opera house, it's just marked off, um, is that, that's not set, set up for like, uh, event parking, is it?
No, it's marked off to keep the access to the garage open and also for facilitating emptying the dumpsters, so that larger truck needs to get in there, and that's, hence it's so wide, I guess.
All right, any other questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, ordinance twenty-three, Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, ordinance twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, amending chapter seventy dash one seventy-six of City of Stoughton Municipal Code relating to no parking anytime both sides of Glacier Marine Drive, and I'd move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hunt, Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, there is a caveat on this, that, um, this would not be posted or enforced until after, uh, the cheese factory is in place and up and running, so that would be sometime late next spring or next summer, I think, August was it you said?
Yeah, August.
So, but at least this way we can get it in place and have it set so that the, that the police and, uh, the street department can put up the signs when, uh, when they need to.
Is that so that they can continue to work with all their construction people?
Yep. Any other questions on this one?
Um, is there any other business that uses the road to park on? It looks like everybody has pretty large parking lots.
I'll, I'll let Dan answer that one.
Yeah, in the, uh, center there of the, uh, yeah, right there, thank you, there's a small mechanic shop, he has parked vehicles out on the street, he was waiting for the, uh, rear of the shop to be paved and finished, which it is now, so he at least now has a place to move vehicles that he's working on. I'm not sure about the other, uh, businesses in that building. One of the issues that was identified was street storage, we had some trailers and so on parked out there, which kind of got the ball rolling on the whole no parking idea.
Great.
So, the idea of this is to allow for construction equipment at the, uh, cheese factory side?
It, it actually would be for the, um, employees of the construction company. They're not allowed to park in the Emi Roth, uh, proper, uh, on the inside of the fence, if you will, so a lot of the employees are showing up in their own vehicles and just parking on Glacier, and as if, as Alder Jensen mentioned, we would just not enforce it until the, uh, Emi Roth is completely finished.
Understood. Um, I really, um, am wondering why we have the, the need for this restriction. Um, we, you know, we've spent on this public infrastructure, and, um, this is quite a wide road, you can get a semi truck down it, um, each way, and it looks like have, still have parking on either side. Um, I don't think this is going to bill, um, you know, this isn't a high traffic area except for these businesses, um, but I just don't see the need for this restriction.
Sir, yes, or if you can, in the other area, other roads in the business park, are they allowed to park on the, the roads themselves?
There's just a small section, otherwise it's just similar, no parking at all, but where it would be on the southeast side, Director Shiel helped me, it's where the, where exclusively Roses was located, kind of by the landscaping, um, company. There's parking allowed during the day, no trucks, but just parking during the day and no overnight.
So, to make it consistent throughout the whole business park, that's what you're looking for, that, and because you, you know, yes, it's wide enough for one semi, but there might be multiple semis coming back, uh, you know, crossing paths, is there enough? That wasn't my dog this morning.
Or mine.
Um, is there enough with, if you have two semis and cars parked on both sides?
Well, that would definitely narrow it up, I agree, the, the road itself is wide, however, given the, um, opportunity to maintain it to snow plow, et cetera, the streets department highly recommended keeping it similar to the rest of the business park for just those reasons. As far as the semi traffic, I think most of it will be on the far west side where Emi Roth is located, but there are some construction trailers that go in and out of Alliant, and, um, there's also another company that keeps their construction equipment, um, near that as well, Intercon, and so there's trailers and larger trucks, if you will, going in and out, I don't, it's not by any means a high volume traffic area.
Right, but if we start having parking on that, then it impedes our public works from plowing and then semis might have a problem.
Yep.
Getting past parked cars and, and getting to, because, you know, with all this, the food industry, it's all about efficiencies and timeliness, and they don't want to be waiting to get in, so.
Alder Person. Oh, go ahead, Rodney, and then Alder Person Jensen has a question.
I was just going to speak to the street width, the street width is wide, but it's not as wide as the original business park or the former area to the south, it's slightly more narrow. If, if the concern really lies primarily related to overnight parking or street storage, you know, that was one of the ideas that was at least contemplated, whether this would be appropriate to restrict it for no overnight parking to prevent that street storage condition, um, but at this point right now, it's being considered for no parking, at least until after the Emi Roth project is completed. Um, one variation there might be, that might be to allow for the signage to occur for all points east of the Emi Roth construction projects, so that ordinance would be enforceable as signed potentially for the eastern half of that area, if you want, so that you don't have that overnight street storage for a year before the ordinance would become effective.
Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, um, both the Chief and Rodney have, uh, alluded to the, uh, storage issue, that, that has been a problem, um, obviously for public works for plowing and so on, and it's, it's in part due to the nature of some of the businesses in that area. Um, there's, uh, at least three or four, three that I can remember right off, um, car repair businesses right in that, uh, in that area down there by where Roses used to be, and, uh, they're constantly parking cars and, and trailers outside, uh, overnight, and I think the Chief can, uh, verify that.
This is on Glacier Marine?
Yeah. No, this, this was, this would be down by the incubators that's across from...
Right, so the one area where the Chief was saying that they do allow.
They, they allow, but they do, they do allow parking there, but they do not allow overnight, and there's, there has been some violations to that. So, this is something that, uh, we, we're just, don't want to make an exception, actually.
Yeah, I, you know, my experience is just driving through, there, there, there really should be no reason other than the construction crew parking on the road, um, you know, the other businesses there, their parking lots, uh, are designed to hold the appropriate amount of vehicles, and usually the overflow is really caused by, you know, people just parking on the road instead of their parking lot, so, um, you know, I certainly understand, um, Alder Person highly is, um, concerned, but it does create pinch point, especially during the winter with plowing. Um, we've had that particularly on the other side of the park where stellar services is across from them incubators there, you know, last winter, I, I received some calls and emails from a couple of different businesses there that really couldn't get around when the snow was plowed around a vehicle that was parked, especially on the corner in that particular area, but, you know, we're, we're really just trying to avoid that scene out here, I guess that's what we're trying to do, and, and if it works out later where we think it's not an issue, we can revisit it.
Okay, um, I do, part of this is wanting to be conscious about our, our land use, and, um, you know, if we're not going to build a street for parking, perhaps, um, be wise about where we're putting the asphalt down in the first place. Point well taken. Are there any other questions or comments?
So, do they land the planes on that very often?
As it looks like.
Um, any others? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That ordinance carries. Okay, that takes us to, uh, new business, R one eighty-eight of twenty twenty-two, and this one is coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this is Resolution one eighty-eight of twenty twenty-two, resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton to discontinue a portion of Velcoman Way located in the City of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schumacher, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is just related to the item, a few items ago, uh, in, uh, discontinuing Velcoman Way, although there is one thing at Plan Commission, uh, it was suggested that the strip or piece of, that used to be Velcoman Way that continued straight through on to fifty-one, um, that we reserve or request from the developer an easement to use that as potential trail extension, and it sounds like, uh, my note from Rodney, if this is correct, that the developer has agreed to that, but we have not received the document, uh, officially at City Hall as yet, so if we can approve the resolution while delaying the recording of it until the document for that easement.
All right, that, how you interpreted it, Rodney?
Yeah, I, I think I can clarify, yeah, that we've worked with the developer to retain utility easements across the entire corridor, in addition to that, as part of what was described, there was a fifteen foot wide path or a trail easement that was... In addition to that, as part of what was described, there was a fifteen foot wide path or a trail easement that was requested. That document's been graded and reviewed and had, has been circulated for signature. We just don't have that original back in our possession yet. We understand it's in the mail, uh, so we don't have any belief that we're not going to obtain it. But at, at the staff level, we're requesting delaying the recording of this resolution uh, until we have the original easement document to record after, after the discontinuance is official.
Does that have to be part of the motion or we just do that?
I was hoping that delaying, uh, I was hoping that would be part of the motion, um, that we delay um, recording of the resolution until after that easement's been received.
All right, somebody willing to make an amendment?
Can I make the amendment?
Sure.
amend the resolution to have that wording in it?
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that one also.
Second by Schumacher. Um, do you have that language Candy?
Yes, I got it.
All right, does anybody have any question on that language?
I, I don't have questions on the language. I have a question. The trail of where, it's a nice little block, but what does it connect to and where does it dump out onto? I mean, it dumps out on Highway fifty-one and that's where hoping that that larger sidewalk, but does it connect to the Virgin Lake?
Yeah, so, so the discussion at the Plan Commission, I think logically, uh, reminding everyone, there's a ten-foot sidewalk that's going to be installed parallel to fifty-one on the east and west side of fifty-one in this area. Uh, sidewalks exist on Nygaard Street, both sides, north, north and south. This would create a pedestrian slash bike connection east to west between Nygaard and fifty-one. What the discussion was is to retain the easement, improvement of that trail segment or path segment wouldn't necessarily occur now until, likely until the fifty-one sidewalk would be installed. Uh, that would be a logical time to make that, that extension between Velcom and, or between Nygaard and fifty-one.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing and seeing none, so we're voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. Uh, so we'll be voting on the resolution as amended. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Excellent. Um, that takes us to R one eighty-nine.
And this is R one eighty-nine of twenty twenty-two, acceptance of public improvements made by Harvest Farms LLC for Nordic Ridge Phase Five and Phase Six, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
That was Benegas?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alder Person Caravelo.
And if Rodney, I'm just going to hand this to Rodney, see if there's one needs to explain anything or if there's any question.
Sure, it, it's a pretty standard acceptance of the public improvements for these two phases of Nordic Ridge. You'll, you'll recognize these streets have been open to traffic. We've gone through and done our, our due diligence to recommend them to be accepted by the city. Therefore, the resolution's been put in place to do so, um, consistent with our development agreement.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, the next two are first readings and these are both coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yep, this is, uh, first reading, Ordinance nineteen of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the zoning classification at twenty-two thirty-two Addison Drive in the city of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And, uh, this one first made its way through parks because this piece at this address was intended to be what I guess we refer to as a pot lot or pocket park. And, uh, at Park, since it is so close to Nordic Ridge Park, we looked at it and basically decided it is, is so close to Nordic Ridge Park that the utility of this for Park didn't make much sense. And it, the developer is now requesting that it be, uh, rezoned so that it can be residential.
Anything you want to add Rodney?
Yeah, the council actually took official action to make that land transfer, um, and so that's, uh, been, been conducted. Uh, this rezoning request would put in place setbacks to allow for the single-family home to be constructed with setbacks consistent to the adjacent properties in that neighborhood or on that street.
We would also, would we receive impact fees for this?
Yeah, at the time, at the time the, um, building permit is issued, there is, there's the appropriate park land and park improvement fees that would be paid for, for that type of construction.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? This is the first reading. Um, so we'll come back at the next meeting. Any questions?
I was just curious what, um, would be the amount approximately that we would receive? Um, if it were to become a single-family residence?
Um, I can give you more specifically, but it's a, it's about three thousand dollars, I believe. I can certainly report that out at the second reading, but if for a single-family home, there's park improvement fees and then if there's not adequate park land involved, that would have to be paid a fee in lieu of. And there's also a trail improvement fee, so I'll, I'll provide that schedule so you have that at your next meeting.
Great, thank you.
We would also, uh, realize, um, some net new construction on a home that would be potentially built there, which would raise our revenue, uh, amount for our, um, for our budget as well as, uh, any future property tax collections. Um, did you have something Dave?
If memory serves me correct, the developer also pledged twenty-five thousand to go into the park development fund. Rodney, we should probably verify that when you're looking up the other numbers.
Yeah, I, I can provide that with the information.
All right.
It may have been twenty.
Twenty sounds correct now that you say it.
Any other questions or comments? Um, so we'll bring that information back, um, for the next meeting. Um, that would take us to Ordinance twenty for a first reading.
And as you said, also, this is a first reading, Ordinance twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the zoning classification at one thousand eight Riverview Drive, City of Stoughton, Wisconsin. This one is a request for a rezone from SR four to SR five, uh, so that this parcel can be developed and, uh, involves different setbacks for those two designations.
All right, anything you want to add on this one Rodney?
At the second reading, or the night of the second reading, there, there will be a certified survey map that'll be acted on by the council as well. It did get recommended for approval from the Plan Commission that creates a separate parcel. Uh, this larger piece will be divided to create another single-family, um, developable lot on the corner of Riverview and Robie Road. At the Plan Commission, there was discussion about the location of the driveway. Um, the applicant indicated their, their interest in putting the driveway off of Riverview and not onto Robie.
All right, any questions on this one? Okay, uh, we'll move to the next one then.
And this one is R one ninety of twenty twenty-two approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional certified survey map for property located at thirty-five eleven State Highway one thirty-eight, town of Rutland, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a request for this survey map, um, for a land swap because essentially, if I recall and from what it looks like, there's the, the, this property or what we're talking about here sort of had a bit of an odd boundary or shape to it, I guess. And this will basically just clean that up and make it more uniform. Best way to put it.
I think that's a fair characterization. The two property owners came to us with this application to create, um, a cleaner lot line between the two properties.
That's the, the line on the bottom is the dotted line with currently there?
Yeah, that's the current, current property line. The bold is the proposed lot line with a C S M.
All right, so they're just basically going to square it off. All right, any questions or comments on this one? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next one looks like it's coming from Finance, R one ninety-one, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, uh, R one ninety-one, twenty twenty-two is an amendment to the twenty twenty-two adopted budget for community development investment grant, and I so move.
Second.
I heard Alder Person reuse. Um, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, this one covers the, uh, the W D, W E D C grant, uh, for the grand inspired building and I think this is just an in and out potentially for accounting, so just, uh, to mark, uh, an expense receivable and record it.
All right, anything you want to add? Um, anybody? Dave, you got anything for this one?
We've already received the money from the state.
That's good news. All right, um, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Um, R one ninety-two, this one also came from Finance.
R one ninety-two, twenty twenty-two is an amendment to the twenty twenty-two adopted budget for landmark commission grant, so move.
Second?
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, same sort of things, uh, grants had come in and we just didn't have any, uh, expense or receipt for it, so a little bit of accounting gymnastics to make it so.
Seems gymnastic.
Exactly. Exciting.
It's called creative accounting.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, the next item, item number nineteen is the sunling litigation discussion and possible action, um, including the settlement agreement. Um, Attorney Dragney, did you want us to go right into closed session or what would you like to do here?
Um, well, it's up to you. Um, I can review the agreement with you in open session and then if you want to discuss it, um, we could go into closed session, um, if you, if there are things that you want to talk about that that may really get into, you know, um, negotiating with, with the sunlings or or, you know, something that you'd like to discuss privately.
It's up to the council. You guys want to start and open and see how it goes or you want to go into closed?
Open first.
Start and open. Matt, do you have the document in front of you? Can you share your screen?
Um, I can't share my screen because I'm, I'm on an iPad and I don't have it on my iPad.
You have it, otherwise I can look for it.
I can email it to you Tim.
Regina's going to put it up there.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we just need to somehow enlarge it. There's a picture, you can drag the names around. You got it. Pulling those over to the top maybe or something. That'll work. Okay, can you see it?
I can, thank you. And I, I have it on my, my desk in front of me too, so when you're all ready, when you're ready, let me know and we'll walk through it together.
There we go. Now we got, we're ready. Everybody ready for this? So we've talked about this multiple times and I don't know if you want to go through the whole thing or highlight the updated stuff. What would you guys?
I think I'll just, I think I'll highlight the key elements. So the recitals which are on the screen now really just, uh, lay out the procedural history, uh, relating to this dispute. If you move down to the next page, we'll get into the agreement. Uh, first, uh, with respect to the Siberian elm tree, uh, this agreement requires the city to, uh, fell and remove the elm tree. And, um, to cover the remaining, you know, area with soil and grass seed. Uh, and to do all of this at the city, all of this work at the city's cost. Uh, that's pretty straightforward. Paragraph three, the Norway maple tree is more complicated. Um, this agreement lays out a process in which the, uh, maple tree would be evaluated by a qualified arborist who would need to be certified by the International Society of Arboriculture. I'm told that your, uh, forester does not hold that certification yet, although I think is close to that. So there would be a need to have a, have the parties agree on an independent arborist to assess the tree using this basic tree risk assessment form that's attached to the agreement as an exhibit. If the, uh, first assessment, if this assessment that's conducted before the sidewalk is installed, um, shows that the tree has a rating, an overall tree risk rating using the methodology on the form of either high or extreme, that's the condition of the tree before the sidewalk goes in, then this agreement provides that the city would simply proceed to remove the tree and plant a new tree having a caliper not smaller than two inches. Uh, if the first assessment shows that the overall risk rating is low or moderate, then within five years after the city completes its project, either the arborist who did the initial assessment or another certified arborist would do a new assessment. And if the overall tree risk rating has determined in that second assessment to now be either high or extreme, then the city would again need to remove, uh, the tree and replace it at the city's cost. Uh, so that's the process now for the maple tree. City would bear all the costs of this, including the costs of the arborist. Um, paragraphs four and five essentially provide for releases. The sunlings would release all claims they have against the city or may have against the city relating to the removal of the trees, the damage, potential damage to the maple tree and all claims that they have asserted or could assert in the pending lawsuit. And the city releases the sunlings from any claims the city would have uh, arising from the same matters such as, uh, claims that the city has asserted that the sunlings are responsible to remove the trees at their cost. Um, so we have essentially that release. Paragraph six provides for the parties dismissing the lawsuit within ten days after this agreement is executed. Um, and the remaining provisions are, um, you know, some things that we don't necessarily need to get into. And it's some technical things. Uh, so that is the agreement. Now, I sent this to the sunlings attorneys yesterday. Um, it has taken us a little while to get this document into its current form. I've not heard back from them yet, but I let them know that, uh, I was planning on presenting this to you all tonight for your decision. And so that's where we are.
So Matt, if we want to ask you questions or on this, we should probably go into closed session.
If there are things that we're going to be talking about that might involve, you know, uh, negotiating points or changes that you might want to make, or you might want to get into my mind about why I did things the way I did or litigation strategy, yeah, we should do that in closed session.
That what you want to do?
Well, is there, I mean, I have a few questions that I feel would be probably maybe more relevant in closed, but what is everybody else thinking at this time?
Okay.
I think, I, yeah, I think closed. If Gina, you have questions, that would be the proper thing to do.
All right. So somebody needs to make the motion with the language. I think the language is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Are you making it, Gina?
Yep.
Okay.
I moved to go into closed session. The Common Council may convene in closed session for statute, state statute 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body concerning litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. So Candy, we would need a roll call vote on this.
Hey. Kylie.
Hi.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Jensen.
Hi.
Lagaki.
Hi.
Miaske.
Hi.
Reeves.
Aye.
Hunt.
Hi.
Schumacher.
Hi.
Benegas.
Aye.
Tolski.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Hi.
Raff. Twelve Alders in favor.
All right. Give us a moment to...